All right, I'm gonna call tonight's meeting to order. Uh, this meeting is being held in the council chambers, which are open for public attendance and participation. Meeting will also be li- uh, livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council. Uh, can I have roll call?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Krishner.
Here.
Councilmember Piscali.
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Uh, Mr. Chaffin, uh, will you, uh, let us know what's going on in closed session tonight, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have two items for closed session this evening. Item A, conference of legal counsel existing litigation pursuant to government code section 5495 6.91. Name of the case, Flores Garcia versus City of Yuba City, case number 402104A9F7G-dot-triple lot one. Item B is liability claim pursuant to government code section 5495 6.95. The claimant is Alyssa Kasubi, claim number 2516, agency claimed against the City of Yuba City. Thank you.
The high bid was what? All right, any, uh, comments from the public tonight, or anything we going into closed session? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we will move into closed session. All right, we'll call this meeting to order tonight. Uh, this meeting is being held in the council chambers, which is open for public attendance and participation. This meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing, but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Emailed comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours prior to tonight's meeting were distributed to the city council already. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Shaw.
Here.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Cole.
Here.
Councilmember Krishner.
Here.
Councilmember Piscali.
Here.
All right, we will have tonight's invocation will be given from Spencer Fennel, he's the youth pastor with Calvary Christian Center. And that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance led by one of our own baseball players, Max, or as I heard him called, Maxi. So, uh, will you please stand for the invocation and the pledge?
If you would, bow your heads, close your eyes. God, we come before you, Father. We thank you for this great nation, God. We thank you for freedom. We thank you for this city. And God, I pray for your wisdom and your blessing to fall upon this, this meeting, Father God, as we talk the business of the city. Jesus, would you provide your supernatural counsel to every single member of thus, of us here? Father God, we, we pray your blessing, uh, and your, your anointing over us, God. We thank you for this, this day, and we thank you for this time together. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Max with us, right from the mic there.
Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. All right, Mr. Chaffin, do we have anything to report from closed session this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
All right, is there any agenda modifications from the council this evening? All right, then we will move on to ceremonial presentations if the council will join me down front. And I would like to invite the coaches and the players from the Yuba City High School baseball team, the 2025 Division Two State Champions. If you'll join us right down in the front. You guys won a state championship, so, uh, so I'm gonna have your coach come on up here in the middle with me. So come on over here, um, and I'm just gonna step out to the front, because it's easier to come out here and just be a part of, of this group. Awesome. You guys are a good-looking group of young men, and you guys have done something that's made us all very, very proud in this city. You know, if you look back at, uh, you know, what goes on in this city and what we're all rooted in, you're gonna hear one sport above and beyond most everything, that's baseball. And, uh, with that, uh, behalf of the city, in behalf of this council, we all want to say congratulations. And now I think it's more importantly that I turn this over to the coach, and he introduces all these champions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, on behalf of the team, the school, we'd like to thank the city for being our biggest supporters, uh, for all the cheering. I got a bunch of texts from peo- I got texts from people I didn't know telling us to go get, so I'm, you know, five through area codes, so sure it wasn't a prank. But, uh, we just want to say thank you, and like, Mr. Mayor, like you said, the, uh, baseball, the roots of baseball are all over this, they're all over this town, all over this county. And so for us to be a part of that and to leave our legacy, I think is very special. Just gonna start on the right here, you guys just shake, uh, just put your hand up there when I call you out, and then, uh, is that what you want? Hey, how are you? Good to see you. Familiar face. Uh, I'm gonna come up and say Mr. Boomgarden's hand, all right? So Jeremiah Hill. Max Ramirez. Josh Del Pageto. Is this thing on? It's on, okay. Where am I? Ari Polos. Polos. Zeke Garcia. Elijah Moncher. Blake Demir. Wyatt Lane. Brody Miller. Max Guth. Cesar Gizer. Gizad. Ashton Decker. Brady Castaneda. Ivan Perez. Billy Raffenan. Emilio Ramirez. Julian Garcia. Reese Castaneda. And Jett Kesterson. I'd be remiss if I didn't call out my coaches, Chris Pope and Dusty Decker. Thank you very much.
You gotta have one too. The head, the head coach himself. Couple of things that, uh, you can go ahead and be seated for just a moment, but, uh, a couple of things in reading, and I just want to make sure we recognize this if, and correct me if I'm wrong, but did you not win the most games for the high school baseball team in the school's history this year?
And, yes, in the school's history and the most wins in California.
That's awesome. And does anybody know the caliber of the coaches for this team? Cause someone told me that you just were recognized as well. And you were recognized as, was it baseball coach of the year, I believe?
Something like that, yeah.
What was it?
Yeah, it's just the coach of the year.
Coach of the year for this division, this district. That deserves a standing ovation right there. All right, if the council can fit in, you want us behind? Okay, I'm gonna step behind, and if you guys will wait just a minute, because we want to shake all of your hands before you sit down, okay? Just squeeze in, go ahead and squeeze in. There you go. And while you're still in, in your, while you're still where you're at, if we could have the administrators from Yuba City High, including our superintendent, Doreen Assuma, I saw you come in, or just don't, come on up and join them, please. All right, don't run off anywhere. Doreen, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Mayor Shaw. Yeah, putting me on the spot. I just have to thank the, the council and the City of Yuba City for the support to our amazing student athletes. So these guys play hard on the field, but the thing also is they are amazing students in the classroom. And so I attribute that to the administrative staff at Yuba City High School, but I do appreciate the council recognizing these guys for the work that they did this season, so thank you. And our coach, Coach of the Year, Maury Castaneda.
Thank you, and it's not just, whoop, I think we keep turning it off, back sinet- there we go. It's not just the city that wants to recognize you. We've got David Morgan. And, uh, you got the attention of some people a little higher up above the council, so David, would you come on up?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, David, with Congressman Lamalfa's office, I'm here representing Assemblyman James Gallagher, Senator Megan Dolly, and of course Congressman Lamalfa, to recognize your guys' state championship. I've got certificates recognizing this historic year with all of your wins, as well as your Coach of the Year. A phenomenal job you guys did, that's huge, that's awesome. You're forever gonna be champions, so congratulations. You have bragging rights over everybody. And we love our North State Champions, don't we? So, congratulations. But on behalf of Assemblyman Gallagher, Senator Megan Dolly, and Congressman Lamalfa, congratulations, you guys well deserved, well earned. Thank you.
Everybody's got them. If the council wants to come on down, congratulations, congratulations. Thank you, congratulations, congratulations. Congratulations, guys, congratulations. Coach, congratulations. How many's coming back next year?
Almost everybody.
Awesome. We want another one next year, guys. All right, congratulations, guys. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations, congratulations. Thanks for doing this. Congratulations, congratulations. Thanks for coming in with them. Thank you. All good? All right. All right, let's give them, let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you again, Coach. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can, we can fit down here for this, so yeah, we can come on down. All right, those are always the fun things, so we're gonna move on. This is the, uh, 30th anniversary for the, uh, trauma intervention, intervention program here, TIP. So can I have Lisa Marie, uh, come down, who's the TIP program director, and all the TIP volunteers that are here to come down? Hi, how are you doing?
Good, thanks. I'm right here.
Again, a good-looking group. And what these, these ladies and, and men that are all a part of this do for our community is incredible. The one thing that, uh, I learned a long time ago about TIP is, you know, that first phone call comes in to 911 or whatnot, but then that second phone call that is, is put out, is put out to you and your organization, and you guys are there. After our rigs and stuff, I'll go home. You guys are there caring for the people, taking care of them, making sure that, um, they're feeling loved and cared for after what they've just went through, whatever that situation. So before we go into the proclamation, just want to say on behalf of all of us, thank you. Thank you for answering the call. So 30 years. In 1985, the Trauma Intervention Program was founded in San Diego, of all places, San Diego, not here? Oh, we were a few years behind. But in 1994, the Yuba Sutter TIP chapter, um, was formed and has faithfully served our area ever since, and has been under your leadership since 2021. Okay, uh, TIP's 31 trained volunteers rotate taking calls with the goal of a 20-minute response time, offering on-scene emotional and practical support during the most traumatic moments of an individual's life. TIP volunteers provide special care to teens and seniors, distributing essential resource literature and ensuring every victim receives a follow-up call within 24 hours to continue the healing process. TIP of Yuba Sutter is 100% community-funded, and let me stress that, 100% community-funded. A testament to the community's belief in the power of compassion and neighborly care is amplifying the best of the human spirit in action right here in our community. So in there, now therefore be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, the mayor of Yuba City, and on behalf of the entire city council and the citizens we serve, do hereby recognize the 30th anniversary of the Trauma Intervention Program and commend TIP for three decades of compassionate service of the people of Yuba Sutter. Would you like to say a few words?
You did so well, but saying what we do. Like he said, I'm Lisa Marie, I'm the director of TIP. TIP is a group of volunteers. I couldn't do it without our volunteers. They are the heart and soul of our program. But we get called by that 911 system, as Mayor said, to be there in those, uh, immediate aftermath of a tragedy. So we respond to deaths, CPR, fatal accidents, fires, any type of traumatic event, to be there to give emotional and practical support to start that healing process. Um, we're always looking for volunteers, so if anybody's interested in looking into being a volunteer, we have an academy coming up at the end of July. Gotta put that plug in. So thank you again, we appreciate it.
Thank you. She's not, man.
No, I'll have to give it to her at our, at our meeting.
Okay, well, we did have a special recognition that we want. We'll go ahead and make you aware of it, if you would present this to her. Conja, right?
Linda Conger.
Linda Conger has actually been there since day one. 30 years of volunteer service. On behalf of the city and the city council, please present this to her and let her know how much we appreciate her support and caring for our community.
We will, thank you so much. Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. You're on the board, aren't you?
I am.
Would you like to say? Come on, Mark.
Please do.
Yeah, it just hit me, he's on, as soon as I got there, Mark is actually on their board.
So, uh, TIP is a, an organization that, uh, shows up and assists not only the citizens, but our, our first responders. So it's important to note that they are part of our team, and as such, uh, they are highly, highly valued. In 1994, when we started this, uh, there wasn't a lot of, of support for TIP, because it was new to the organization or organizations, but, um, it's continued to grow into the point where, I don't know if they mentioned how many calls you're going on each year right now?
Yeah, last year we did 540 calls.
Okay, these are 540 highly intense, um, uh, incidents that they provide support to our community, all volunteer. So I, as a board member, Lisa Marie, uh, is our executive director. She leads the ship, if you will, and has done a great job, but, uh, it takes, there's anything else, it takes volunteers. So if any of you out there are interested in helping, please, okay?
Thank you, Mark. So, again, thank you guys.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yeah, give them another round of applause, thank you. It's a night of recognition, so the next we're gonna be going to our own Sutter County Museum. And, uh, is Molly here? There she is. Molly Bloom, who's director and curator for our Sutter County Museum. And is Debbie Reed. There she is. She's the board president, and if there's any other board members, please come on down. He's not a board member. Yeah, slide on in. Wade, you're on the board, aren't you?
Yeah, Wade's on the board.
So, um... You're over there. Okay, all right. Molly, uh, you know, I wanted to take the opportunity to recognize you here in the chambers. We were over at the celebration that you had there at the museum, and, uh, I'm gonna allow everybody else to, to, you know, contribute as well here tonight, but I can tell you, one of the five, what you've done with that place in the recent years has been phenomenal. The new exhibits, the way you're stepping things up, um, it speaks to the caliber of the curator that they brought in to really take care of us here in, in Sutter County. So I want to say that, um, and, uh, so I'm actually gonna let everybody else talk before I do the proclamation. So Wade, you're on the board, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it's been my privilege, uh, to serve with these wonderful people for the last four years. And they've, they've invited me to stick around for four more, so thank you for that. It's one of, uh, one of the things that makes our community so special, one of our amenities. I highly encourage anybody who's, who hasn't, um, gone to the museum, it's just, it's directly across the street over here, so it's not very hard to find. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention, uh, cause Tony's standing right next to me, that Trees and Traditions is coming up. And, uh, and we've got, and it's never too soon, so we've got tickets to sell, so.
This has been, uh, you know, I've, I've been lucky, I've been on this group now for almost 12 years, and, uh, it's a fantastic group. We do an awful lot of work. Molly, uh, the greatest thing that ever happened to us, um, by far. And we, we, as Wade said, we, we look forward to all of you coming to Trees and Traditions in December. So we have tickets, we will sell, so. My thanks to the board. Uh, museums are part of the quality of life in a community, and that the work that you all do in providing that asset to our community is highly, highly appreciated. Thank you.
Keep going.
All right, so my nephew says he lives for museums, and he's a child after my own heart. And, uh, so I can tell you, that museum is very impressive. It's small but mighty, and as a history teacher and lover of history, I think that there's just something for everybody there, and excellent job. We're excited to see the Tet Festival, too, that exhibit.
Uh, the, uh, Tet, if you haven't been over there yet, is very, very impressive. Uh, I went and took my wife over, and it was, I didn't realize it was interactive until I was leaving. So I turned around and I interacted with a few things. But no, you, you're doing a beautiful job, young lady. Uh, it, you've taken it, I can remember being a kid going in there, and it was kinda like, well, okay, there's some stuff in here, but you've made it relevant, you've made it current, and thank you so much for, for your leadership.
All right, now we'll do the formality, and, um, we wanted to take this opportunity after you had the open house to, to actually bring you here and recognize your success and the success of the board and the volunteers. But the Sutter County Museum, uh, has been a vital, uh, cultural, educational, institutionary community since 1975. And for those of you that don't know, it was constructed through the generosity of Howard and Norma Harder. And, uh, you familiar with those and the Sutter County Historical Society and other private donors, and was presented to the Sutter County Board of Supervisors as a gift to our community. The mission statement is to share local stories, strengthen community bonds, celebrate Sutter County's diverse cultural heritage, and to demonstrate how understanding the past prepares us for the future. This is remarkable. In the past year alone, the museum offered numerous activities that brought nearly 4,000 visitors into, into our museum. That's a notable 35% increase from the previous year. The museum has thrived through, uh, adverse economic climates, and thanks to the 64 volunteers who generously contributed more than 3,332 hours of service in support of the museum. Sutter County Museum continues to be a treasured community asset that connects generations through the shared history right here in learning. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Dave Shaw, the mayor of Yuba City, on behalf of the entire city council and all of our citizens, do hereby honor and celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Sutter County Museum and extend our gratitude to the volunteers, staff, and supporters who have sustained and strengthened the museum over the past 50 years. Let's give Molly a round of applause. Would you like to say a few words?
I actually would, yeah, thank you. Oh, you did. No, you did a wonderful job, um, with that discussion of, um, the accomplishments, but I really would just like to add that, you know, the museum is really a partnership between the County of Sutter and the Museum Association, which is our nonprofit, and so those are our board members who are here with me today. Um, I also have Katie with me, she's our assistant curator. And, um, as you said earlier, uh, we are small but mighty, uh, so we are a full-time staff of two, and we're really proud of what we've been able to accomplish that really wouldn't be possible if we didn't have the support through working with our colleagues at the county, um, and working with our very dedicated nonprofit board. You know, so this board is really the reason that we've been able to bring 4,000 people, um, with our programs this past year. We do about 40 public programs a year, over 60 field trips and school tours, five temporary exhibits each year. Um, and then we put on the wonderful Trees and Traditions fundraiser that they kept mentioning. But, you know, we're really proud that we've still been able, uh, to be here for 50 years, uh, serving the community, and we really thank all of you. And, um, also just, you know, to keep in mind that there's always something new. So as you mentioned, you all were there to celebrate with us the opening of our brand-new exhibits on Yuba Sutter floods and our revised exhibits on the Nisnan and the Gold Rush. And this summer, we have the awesome, uh, Tet Lunar New Year Festival exhibit, which is all hands-on, especially for kids. And last month alone, we had 1,400 people come to see it already. So, yeah. Thank you, guys. And, uh, and yeah, and thank you, Mayor Shaw, and, uh, the Yuba City Council for hosting us here. And also see if Debbie would like to say anything. She's our board president this year, um, and has really, uh, led us to a lot of... She's our board president this year, and has really led us to a lot of the success we've seen so far this year, too.
Thank you, and thank you again to the city council for honoring us tonight. I'm kind of a legacy member on the board. My mother was in this very same position years and years ago. And so it makes me really proud to continue the tradition of the Sutter County Museum. I love it, it's a wonderful place to be, make sure everybody makes a trip there this summer. Thank you, and comes to Trees and Traditions in December.
And I forgot to say that we're also free to visit, all of our services, programs, all these great things we've been talking about. This is all free as a service to the community. So we're proud to do it, and thank you for the honor.
Thank you. If we could stay tight, right here, we're just, I think we need one more picture that would be very fitting, because the city has sponsored the museum for many, many decades as well. So, Mr. Bindorf, will you come down on my right side here and join us as our city manager? And then Steve Smith, will you join us on the end there representing the county? Let's kind of bridge it from one end to the other. You mean our council member emeritus? All right. Thank you, guys. Let's give them a round of applause again. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. I gotta remember that I get into old habits, and it's like I wanted to make sure we all did, so. Because I don't see him. Did Phil Traynor leave? I don't see him. Oh, there he is, okay, perfect. Okay. All right, those are always the fun things that we get to do. It's always really nice to honor, you know, the leaders in our community. So we're going to move on to agenda item four. Appearance of interested citizens. You're welcome and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on the consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other item within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speakers. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express the opinions of the group. And I have a couple of speaker cards, and I'm going to start with Mr. Phil Traynor. And sir, I'm going to give you five minutes this evening, because you actually gave us written notice a few weeks ago when you came to the other meeting, to where we weren't able to do this. So, Mr. Traynor, you're going to have five minutes tonight, sir.
My name is Phil Traynor. I come up here every once in a while. I'm like a bad penny, I keep showing up every once in a while, but that's what you have to put up with. What I would do is, I just came out tonight to see what the city council have done on the issue that I presented last couple of weeks ago. Has anything else been done? Has anybody been in touch with San Diego? Or what are we going to do with our roads? That's my statement.
Mr. Traynor, after the meeting, we'll be more than happy to follow up with you on what's being done on those, because this is, of course, public comment. But a couple of weeks ago, you didn't speak, so we didn't know exactly what you were going to ask us tonight as well. But, Mr. Bindorf, can we follow up with him after the meeting?
Yes, through the mayor. I would also offer that in the presentation that's upcoming for the 2526 fiscal year budget, there'll be some information about the plan for some of our roads going forward. And if you'd like to hang out for a little while and talk budget, more than happy to have you. You'll hear a little bit more.
It would all depend how long this meeting's going to go on, because I don't drive anymore, so I have to rely on somebody else to look after me. But I'd be more than happy to sit around and wait.
Yeah, and if it goes a little long, Mr. Traynor, I'm more than happy to make sure a packet of the presentation gets delivered to you somehow, and makes it, make it available for you.
Okay, and if that, if I do leave, what I would like to do, if I could get a copy of the budget.
Sure. I don't know if we have one printed and available tonight.
Yeah.
But I'll make.
People never ask for it, but I, every once in a while, I get, stick my finger in the hole and see what the hell's happening.
Absolutely. I'll make sure you get both of those documents, we'll set them aside, and we'll get ahold of you.
Okay, I'll wait around, thank you.
All right, thanks, Mr. Traynor.
Thank you. All right. I have a second speaker card, Mr. Dale Whitmore. You have three minutes, sir.
Hello, my name is Dale Whitmore. I'm just here to talk about the Shanghai Bend Rapids Road closure. That road is, it goes from the end of Shanghai Bend Road down to the Shanghai Bend Rapids, which is one of the most popular fishing locations in Sutter County. It has been open for decades and decades. In April of 2019, or April of 2022, the gate was locked, I was told by the Yuba City Public Works Department. I came before the city council in July of 2022, and the Yuba City City Council reopened the gate. It was open from July through September of 2022, for about four or five months. And I monitored it, and there was no, no problems that I could see. But in September of 2022, the gate was reportedly closed by the Department of, of California Department of Fish and Wildlife. And then in November of 2023, the Department of Fish and Wildlife property was transferred to Sutter County. So the county, the property now, the road, is about one-third owned by the city, and about two-thirds owned by Sutter County. And I was the biologist in charge of looking after the property from about 2000 to 2012. And I used to drive in there once a month. I had no maintenance problems. Couple of times a year, I'd pick up a load of trash or something, somebody dumped some sheet rock or something, I'd haul it to the dump. But the maintenance was very minimal during those years. And the road has been closed now since September of 2022. And I have been constantly talking to the city and the county, and trying to get this road reopened, so that people can drive down to the rapids, so that they only have a short walk to get to the rapids. I mean, as a community, we're trying to make fishing available to the public, to our citizens, tourism, and for one of the most popular places in Sutter County for fishing, to require everybody take a four-tenths of a mile walk, I don't see a need for it. I mean, we have a public road, the public road is, should be open to the public, and that's what I'm here to talk about. Thank you very much.
Alrighty, thank you. Mr. Bindorf, can we just put that on a tickler to follow up later? Because I remember this issue from a few years ago, the question of who owns it back and forth, and we can follow up and see what the status is, not tonight, but here in the next few days or weeks.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I want to make it clear, too, that council member Cole approached me about a week and a half, two weeks ago, and provided me some information from Mr. Whitmore. I reached out to the county, and we're going to have those discussions, but I'll follow up.
Got you.
Again, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine, it can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items prior to the time that the council votes on the motion, unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from the consent calendar for individual actions. We have several of us that need to recuse ourselves tonight from normal business that's routine. And Mr. Chaffin, will you advise the council how we're going to handle this tonight, so that we can still effectively take care of this on consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Motion. Yes, the city council can approve this on one motion. Just for the record, the vice mayor and council member Pasquale are recusing themselves from item eight. The mayor Shaw is recusing himself from item nine. And council member Pasquale is recusing himself from item 10. The basis for the recusal is they either live in or own the property. Now, there's going to be one vote. All the council members will vote on the items from which they have not been recused. And after the vote's taken, I would like to read into the record the vote for the minute, so it's clear as to what the actions are. Thank you.
Okay, so we can move forward with the consent calendar, but as you said, I will not be expressing a vote or an opinion on item nine. And then the vice mayor and council member Pasquale will not be doing that on eight, and then council member Pasquale on 10. But we, okay. So with that, is there any comments from the public on any item on the consent calendar? Any comment from the public on any of the items on the consent calendar? Then I will bring it back to the council for discussion or action.
Through the mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a consent counter items five through 15, excuse me, five through 14.
Okay. Would that be with the recusals as mentioned?
Correct.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, motion carries with the recusals as noted.
And thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the record, that would be items five through seven, 11, and 14. The vote is 5-0. As for item eight, the vote is 3-0 with recusals for Vice Mayor Boomgarden and Councilmember Pasquale. For item nine, the vote is 4-0 with a recusal for Mayor Shaw. And for item 10, the item is 4-0 with a recusal for Councilmember Pasquale. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. All right, we will move on to our business item this evening, which is adoption of the city, Yuba City's fiscal year 2526 operating and capital budgets for the 2526 appropriations limits as well. And our city manager, Mr. Bindorf, and our finance director, Deanna Pope, have the floor.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Robert Bindorf, interim city manager. So what we have for you tonight is a presentation on the fiscal year 2526 budget. This is subsequent to the workshop that we had a few weeks back. And we've done a little cleanup, a little bit of adjusting, and here we are. But that isn't the end of the cleanup and adjusting either. As you know, the director of finance, also the city manager, has the ability to make some adjustments during the course of a year, depending on what they are. But we will certainly look forward to doing that. As I mentioned before, it's sort of a planning year, we'll get into that as well. But also, we're going to have intervals during the course of this next fiscal year, such as the quarterly updates, mid-year updates, and adjustments, et cetera. So you'll see a little bit of activity that continues on for the remainder of the upcoming fiscal year. Having said that, I'm going to go ahead and kick it off just with a brief introduction of who's presenting tonight. And of course, me, I'm the boring part. And then Deanna Pope, our finance director, will be here, talking about the budget as well. And then you'll have Josh Wolfe, who's going to be presenting utilities and public works items to you and CIP. So the process, well, we had a very involved process this year that took things in a different direction, if you will. And that was far as the presentation that was made before you at the workshop, and also with the ad hoc committee. We really tried to focus on the deficit that we're facing, and unfortunately, get that right out of the way. It's about 6.2 million, give or take, a few, that we're up against. And I think, for the most part, it seems like an ominous hole. But if you look all throughout California right now, you're going to find that cities and counties, special districts, are all experiencing some difficult times. And, but I have to tell you, what makes it a lot easier and a lot more manageable, and I've only been in this seat for a couple of months now, but the department heads that you have here, and your senior management, the folks that are working on the budgets, submitting all of that detail to us, and going over those, just line item by line items, to make sure that they have a respectable, efficient, and effective, balanced budget, has been tremendous. And I really enjoy working with all them, and I can promise you this, that they all have the city's best interests at heart. And they're looking at making do with what we have. And you always hear that line of doing more with less. We're, unfortunately, we're in those times where sometimes you have to do less with less. But we're making good progress, and it's not attributable to me, attributable to all of them and their staff that they have. It's just incredible work, and I'm constantly getting phone calls, or thoughts, or ideas from your leadership team, saying how they are going to be more efficient, or they found that one item that's going to save a little bit of money, or save a little bit of labor time to get those things done. Again, all within the best interests of serving the residents of Yuba City. It's not an easy year for anybody. And just by way of history, when you look at the last couple of years, what the economy's done, it has, over the last probably eight quarters or so, if you just take the automobile industry and you take building and construction, they're down significantly. And when you look at the percentages, it's even more ominous, if you will. But during those last eight quarters, I mean, again, you can blame it on the rising cost of construction materials, whether it's labor costs, inflation, but also high interest rates. And it is really causing some challenges, not only for people purchasing those types of products, but for those selling them as well, and keeping people employed. As you know, all has direct or indirect impacts to the economy. And if you look at the roughly seven or eight sectors that we look at for sales tax revenue, if you will, and you look at what's down and what's up in the last quarter of this year, it's very indicative of what's happened over the last six or seven quarters. And what I mean by that is you're, the down areas, of which there are more unfortunately, as far as sales being down, and the receipts for sales tax, correspondingly down, it's about roughly 65% total downward trends. And if you look at the upward trend ones, it's only in about the 24, 25% area, the total. That's in the aggregate. Now, those dollar amounts can mean different, I'm just showing, telling you percentages, but those dollar amounts can vary based upon what type of industry generates those sales tax dollars. But if you just look at those percentages alone, that is massive. About the numbers that are down in Q4 compared to just Q4 one year ago. So it impacts not only our budget, but it impacts home budgets. It impacts budgets across the state of California for local governments. So putting the budget together is not just an indicator of what we're doing here, but it's what's happening around us as well. So having said that, we're adjusting as necessary, but this next year is going to be a year of planning, and working very hard at those long-term solutions. As you all know, and I've talked to your council about this before, just for Robert personally, I don't believe in those short-term fixes. To, as just a one-time shot, and you forget about it, it looks fixed, and you move on. Yeah, you may have some short-term fixes that are included in this upcoming year's budget, but at the same time, we are looking at everything. To make, from revenues to expenditures, to make sure that going forward, we can manage it more effectively, and our citizens don't feel the brunt of any significant service reductions. It's not going to be easy. There are going to be some difficult decisions for your council, and we'll get into that later. But I just wanted to remind you that I think the work that your staff put in, at least keeping things at bay, and not only that, the work that your council has put in. You were faced with some pretty tough choices earlier in the year. And your city council effectively, in working with your department heads, slashed about 2.34 million from the budget, the current year's budget, right in the middle of it. And that takes a lot of energy to do that. And it takes a lot of energy from your departments to make sure that they have the right things picked out to reduce. And they did, they made those recommendations, it's not easy. But really appreciate that going forward, or else that deficit would be much worse. So having said that, again, I'd love to paint a pretty picture for the economy, but it's all cyclical. I mean, we've all lived through it, and I've been through these cycles more times than I want to admit in my public service life. And this too shall pass. And this too shall pass. It'll get better, but to the degree that we need it to get better sooner rather than later, it may take a little bit more time, and the recovery time always takes longer than what it took to get you there in the first place. So patience is key. And the last thing I'll tell you before I forget, and I was going to do this at the end, but then again, I'd probably forget, is I've had the opportunity over the last couple of weeks, well, it's been since I've been here a couple of months, but really over the last few weeks, to get some good face-to-face time with all of your employees here at the City of Yuba City. And I don't know how many I've met with so far. I've kind of lost track, but from our fire personnel to the folks out at Water, Wastewater, to the PD and our miscellaneous employees, those that work in City Hall. And I have to tell you, all of them are interested on, in what we're doing, but all of them are interested in sticking it out, too, and making sure that they help and they're part of the solution. But everybody was engaged. I got treated so well with that, even being a fresh, new, not-so-pretty face walking into the room. But hats off to your employees, what groups of folks. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Deanna and let her talk a little bit about the general fund, and then you'll see me a little bit later.
The next few slides are going to be a high-level overview of the general fund. These are our main categories for discretionary revenues. Overall, we are seeing a slight increase in revenues. Fiscal year 24-25 adopted total revenues was 56.3 million, and we are estimating 56.4 million for 25-26. While we are estimating increases in property taxes and business licenses, we are, this is being offset by declines in other categories such as sales tax and motel, hotel revenue. Public safety is approximately 63% of the overall general fund budget. The general fund continues to face financial pressures with rising costs in areas such as workers' comp, employee health benefits, merit increases, pensions, utility and utility costs. Departments have kept the net increase in expenditures to around $900,000. This has been achieved in part by freezing 17 positions, closing the gap from September to January, and identifying other areas to reduce spending, even as some costs continue to rise. The total estimated expenditures for 25-26 proposed budget is 60 point, 62.6 million. We are facing approximately $6.2 million budget gap in the general fund. The proposed plan to close this budget gap includes the following elements: use of approximately $5 million from reserves and discretionary funds, as outlined in this slide; using $489,000 from available workers' compensation internal service funds to absorb the increased costs for workers' comp and avoid passing those increases to the departments; a revenue increase of $75,000 through a proposed cost recovery fee on credit card transaction; utilization of about $600,000 in projected interest earnings from ARPA funds that we received for 24 through 25. The departments presented capital acquisition needs to the budget ad hoc committee. From the vehicle replacement fund, we are proposing $722,000 in vehicle and equipment purchases for the general fund and $165,000 for the wastewater fund. This summary outlines the equipment requested to support the city's technology infrastructure. These items will be funded through the technology replacement fund, which is supported by contributions from all divisions. And now, Robert will be taking you through the health and pension slides.
Deanna reminded me that Scarlett is doing the utility presentation, and I didn't want to forget her. There you go. So health and pension benefits. Let me get to my spot, so bear with me here. So why do we call this out? Well, these are costs that I remember from years back. You know, we would have those discussions in an open session with the board that I, boards that I previously worked for. And we talked about, you know, obviously, the pension increases that are coming about every year, and they just continue to have a trend line that is shooting up. But the one, I would say, maybe the wrong terminology, but I'll just say it anyway. I think you know me by now, but the silent killer is one of the, is health insurance. And those costs are just incredibly high. And as you can see, our recent projection that, or amount that we got was about a 14.8% increase in health insurance premiums and that. And we'll be getting the PERS health insurance rates, and we'll probably see something similar to that as well. But those are the plans that are offered to your employees here within the city. I don't see that slowing down anytime soon, especially with the cost of healthcare rising like it is. So these are the pension projections. And as you can see, the, let me see if I get it right here. It's not. Look at me go. So the blue line is basically our miscellaneous employees here, and it shows the trend line where that's headed. And this is, the green line is safety. That's the tier two, safety tier one. I'll not bore you with the explanation. I think you've heard it probably 100 times. So, but the bottom line is all of them are increasing. What you're seeing at the bottom, you saw this slide during the workshop, is that the, these are your PEPRA lines here. So the new pension benefits that went into effect years ago. But you see those as relatively flat. It, it's almost darned if you do, darned if you don't by going to a new plan like they did with PEPRA, when that was introduced, I think, by Governor Brown, if I'm not mistaken. And the problem is, is you've got less money coming into these plans overall. And I think it can create quite a bit of a challenge. Unfortunately, one of the good things we have going for us, it looks like PERS pensions earnings are going to exceed their expectations on their investments. So you're not going to see that, you're not going to see those big swings, especially after they took corrective, corrective actions with the smoothing-out formulas that occurred in previous years. You're not going to see big swings and decreases, but you should see at least a little bit of leveling off. I can promise you that those trend lines aren't going to continue to go up, but maybe not spike as hard with some of those return rates that PERS is receiving. I put these slides in here along with Deanna because we wanted to remind you of the work that the council's done. I mean, those are some big amounts to look at, but to be honest with you, so are other counties and cities and special districts across the state of California. They have liabilities that are in the millions of dollars, some in the hundreds, some in the billions of dollars as well. But your pension funding status, your council took some action to put money aside for these types of things. You do the pay-as-you-go, obviously, but you also set money aside for your pension trust. But one of the numbers, I think, to look at here is your funded ratio. So what percentage are you funded with the assets that you have on, on tap with PERS? And if you look at the valuation in '22, 70.7, and 69.9 in June of '23, and that's from the latest actuarial, by the way, that's just latest information that they have for us. And so there's not much of a swing there. And a lot of that funded ratio also had to do with their return on investment, if you remember, a couple of years ago wasn't so great. So that's what's going to cause that to, to jockey around a little bit. But still, when you look there, you'll see a funded ratio that's fairly consistent, and you're up in the 70 percentile. So I'll show you another slide here and line out what that means a little bit further. And then your OPEB actuarial resort, results. So if your council, I believe you're probably familiar with this, this is other than pensions, right? So health insurance benefits is a key one, what we offer to folks once they retire. And if you look at what our liability is here and how we're funded, you can see right down here, what we are at, our funded ratio last year was about 99.33%, almost 100% funded. It dipped down a little bit, but then again, we're not dealing with large dollars, if you will. But your council has also put money into trust as well. You have a little over, let me see if I get these numbers right, Deanna, I think a little over $4 million in our pension trust and approximately $2 million in our OPEB trust. So you have that money sitting there, and they, that money can be used to advance pay or pay your pensions or your OPEB obligations on an annual basis. You don't want to expend all that money out of there. The investment returns, as we met with the team at PERS for OPEB, we think we're doing pretty well, as well as your pension trust. But those are good numbers. So here's the other slide I want to show you. Well, there's a lot of blue dots there. Don't let the blue dots freak you out. But if you, this is the funded ratio as of June 30 of 2023 for cities within Cal-PERS. So I pulled this down, and I identified where Yuba City is at. And as you can see, the two items, the two orange dots, let's see if I get it right, the two orange dots that are right there, we're right in the mix as far as what our funded ratio is compared to other cities. So not so bad. We're right in the mix. We're not as high as some, but we're certainly not as low as a lot of them. So we're, we're in a decent position, not anything abnormal, I guess is what I'm trying to communicate. So we have a few enterprise funds to talk about, and look at, she's right there, ready to roll.
I'm a theater girl. I know what I'm doing.
Look at you go.
All right. So, you know, Ben ran away, and guess what? You got to keep seeing me, I guess. That's what that means, tragedy. So yeah, I'm going to talk a little about water and wastewater are my, are my gig, as you guys oft, often see my name associated with. So in addition to all of the general fund going on, my, I live over in the water and wastewater side, and between the two, we're talking about 40 million in revenue that come in every year. And those have their own trials and tribulations. So I'll reorient us a little bit and talk about what we've got going on budget-wise over there. The water system, we have over 20,000 commercial, you know, 20,000 customers at this point, residential, commercial, everything from single-family user to sun suite growers and everything in between. And all of the infrastructure that's associated with that, including 25 full-time equivalent employees as well as, and that doesn't include all the other employees that are needed for this, that are funded in other ways, whether that's the laboratory or engineering, utility billing, all of those are not direct employees of the enterprise fund, but they are, or, but they are funded through it in, in part. Like I said, are, the big thing, too, with all of this infrastructure and all of this expectations, is it was built in 1969, and it has had some major improvements projects along the way, but a lot of it is still original infrastructure. So we are balancing the high level of need, the age of the infrastructure, and the regulatory oversight required to produce high-quality, safe drinking water for our customers and meet those state requirements. So our numbers look a little, a little different. The biggest factor being, of course, I want to try this cool, let's, let's try this cool thing. Oh, yeah, there we go. Look at that revenue line. That is the important part here. Our revenue is coming in pretty healthy this year, thanks in part this year and next. We're looking at a little bit of an upswing for, for water revenue and thanks in part to the 2.65% increase that council put in place for March of this year, as well as a lot of the continued housing development. Those, we're seeing a lot of benefit coming from the, the connections side and our water sale that we did at San Gorgonio Pass earlier this year. We have tried to, as far as expenditures, we've been able to keep those stable on the water side this year. I tried to absorb those changes as much as possible. There were a lot of increases still in nondiscretionary items like power, parts and supplies. Chemicals are kind of iffy right now, but those prices also, we were able to absorb them right now, but those prices are a little unstable still. I, we have, we're waiting still to see impacts on things like tariffs, of course, from our vendors. We, and we'll be monitoring that, of course, and may come back with mid-year adjustment requests based on how those, those units, those prices change throughout the year. The debt service ratio is a big concern on the, on the water and wastewater sides because of the, the debt required to handle of the, the infrastructure improvements. So in order to maintain that ratio between revenue expenditures, we have to keep that 1.2 ratio and between revenue and above the, of the, above the expenditures, sorry about that. But, and, and we currently met that and actually improved it, but last year was, was difficult with 1.22 only. But we were able to improve that quite a bit this year, thanks in part to those improved revenue numbers. But of course, it, this is still very, very tight. We wouldn't be able to, we would be unlikely to take on any new, new debt project for projects if needed. And so ultimately, in addition to meeting that debt, that debt ratio, that remaining balance is what's going to contribute to CIP for next fiscal year. So as the infrastructure improvements, and like we just talked about, construction costs are, are continuing to rise, and we require these, what we have is that narrow margin, that narrow, and that margin is very narrow at this point with the, we're projecting with this budget to go into fiscal year 26, 27 to add only $2 million to the CIP, which we all award those contracts, and we know, we know the 2 million doesn't go as far as we'd like it to when, when we're talking major water, water and wastewater projects. So that's, those are our main things with water. Josh will go into detail with the actual CIP projects that are on the horizon, but including the main concern that we have, the biggest one on our side, right, on that side right now, is the aquifer storage recovery well project, which is, we have made the funding for between the water and the grant that we have, but unfortunately, that has had a significant impact on the total overall available water funding for CIP. So then we go over to good old waste. Does anybody have anything about water before I move on to wastewater? Happy day.
Yeah, through the Mayor. Thanks. Thank you for the presentation. Just a, can you go back to the water side?
Absolutely, maybe. Let's see. Yes.
Perfect. Just wondering what the delta between the 25-26 proposed revenue and the 24-25 projected, why is it less?
So some of that is, so like I said, one of them is the, the projected revenue that we have come in is things that we don't necessarily plan for, like the San Gorgonio Water Pass agency revenue. That was 675,000 that we didn't budget in, but we're also not going to plan for. If we can get it, we'd love it, but we're not going to plan that into the, as budgeted revenue.
Got it. Thank you.
So on to wastewater. So wastewater is, is also its own beast. We have over 16,000 customers on the, on the wastewater side and all of the associated infrastructure that goes with that, collection mains and the, the facility, 17 lift stations. We have a full state-accredited commercial laboratory that does, that, that does work for both, both plants as well as other regional agencies and, and local customers. And we have about 39 full-time employee equivalents in that, under the wastewater fund, as well as, like I said, those that are funded in other ways through cost allocation plan or transfers, that sort of thing. And this, this plant isn't a whole lot newer. It's built in 1972 with a major improvements project that was completed just a few years ago, but despite that, it, we, similarly, we didn't replace the whole plant. We've got a lot of original infrastructure still in place over, you know, over the decades that is still, still hanging on there for us. And we have, we are subject to state regulatory oversight through our MPDS permit to protect both the residents and the environment, which, you know, is not a, what is our, what is our interim city manager, like says, it's not a, it's not a cheap venture to, to do utilities, and that's very true. On the revenue side, so starting again with revenue for wastewater, the revenue for, the rate revenue is stagnant at this point. We have no, no rates to go for. So while we did see some healthy, above what we, wow, above what we originally projected, which was, which was lovely to see, but those are really due to the, the continued housing development, the increased laboratory fees that we put, this is our first fiscal year with the full laboratory fee revenue changes, and our expanding septic taller business. So a lot of the revenue is coming from everything but our base, base rates. So that, that does limit what we can do with that. There's only so far we can go with, without changes to that base. Unfortunately, on this side, we had a much more difficult time absorbing the nondiscretionary costs rising this year, especially associated with power, as well as our biosolids. costs rising this year, especially associated with power, as well as our biosolids disposal, parts and supplies and other materials. These, and these as well, we do remain unsure about the cost of these vendors will often, are unsure about where they will go as far as tariffs and later on in the year, we will continue to keep you guys updated as we are. And we, the debt service ratio, again, we have had, we had a very difficult time this year in meeting that 1.2. Water was our difficult, our beast last year, wastewater was, was the harder one on this side because of that, that change in all of a million dollars of expenditures, almost a million dollars that we needed to add to the operating budget. So we, in order to keep meeting that debt ratio, that 1.2, to get it to that 1.28, we actually have, are temporarily unfunding one of our vacant supervisors and will, are monitoring how we can approach that. But it's, it's a, it's a temporary, you know, solution very much so. But, and so we were able to meet our current debt ratio for this year to remain solvent, but it does prevent us from, there's clearly no, no room there to be able to take on any more debt and that includes the, the SR state revolving fund loan that we need for the outfall refuser, defuse, outfall replacement diffuser project. I'm really doing a great job with this, which Josh will tell you all about when we were working on that, that loan. But unfortunately, we cannot, and we cannot sign it at this point because we don't have the, don't have the, the space on paper to pay for it, which is, that is what it is, right folks? And so, and once again, also that issue of that margin that remains is what we get for CIP for next year. So fiscal year 26, 27, with how narrow this budget is, we're looking at less than a million dollars will go into CIP for next year, closer to 750. So we are very tight, but we're making it happen, making it happen. We are very adaptable and on our side of the world. So we are making it happen, but it is going to be, it's going to be a journey this year. We're, we're in the, we're in the boat too. And to some, we have, we do have a couple of capital acquisition requests for utilities. One is just a pallet, electric pallet, pallet jack over at our north plant, water treatment plant. And the wastewater, they have a couple of pieces of laboratory equipment that they need to replace that are out of service life and they, that they use constantly as part of their, their base services that they provide. But that's it. We kept it very simple this year, kept it clean, but it is, we're working with what we got, but we were able to make it happen this year. I hope that, I hope that clears up. Does anybody have anything for me on wastewater before I hand it back?
Think you're good, thank you very much.
Awesome. Well, Josh will give you the fun stuff, you know, the, the, you know, juicy construction details, you know, mine's the, mine's not nearly as fun. Josh, you got this? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, Courtney.
Thank you, council. We'll try not to fumble through this like I fumbled this guy. So here tonight to talk about CIP projects, we have about eight different, or seven different categories that we place for our CIP. We have general community services projects like parks, facilities, projects to upkeep the different facilities that we maintain, or that we have for our corporation yard, our senior center, other areas like that, wastewater, public safety, streets and roads, and finally water. So for this fiscal year, we have all these different funds that we program the CIP through. So we have our general fund, which we're looking, or we're proposing about 885,000 to program. Transportation Development Act, we're looking to program about 1.67 million, streets and roads, 3.05 million, development impact fees, we're not proposing any programming this year. Water, we're looking at programming about 6.38 million with some of the large projects that Scarlett had mentioned and I'll get into later. Wastewater, about 3.09 million. We're also programming about 500,000 for federal grants that we're looking to get reimbursement for and then about 3.5 million for state grants that we're going to be reimbursed for. That's including the state revolving fund, about 210,000 for the community development block grant. And lastly, about 141, that's through other sources such as grants through Feather River Quality Management District and other local entities. So with that, for the various categories, general fund, we're looking at about 355 facilities projects, we're looking at about 225 community services projects, about 390,000, public safety, about 650,000, streets and roads, about 5.58 million, water, about 6.35 million, and wastewater, about 2.95 million. And now I'll get into each one of these categories and do a high level overview of the projects we're looking at for this coming fiscal year. So for general projects, we're allocating, or requesting to program about 250,000 for the general plan update. That's an annual allocation for the 2035 comprehensive update to the general plan. Also 75,000 for the ERP upgrade, switching from our, our dated ERP system to the new Tyler system, which was approved earlier in the fiscal year. Next, we have facilities projects. We're looking at programming about 115,000 there with, to buildings and grounds and then 50,000 towards the Union Pacific Riddle Road property acquisition, which we're continually pursuing. For community services projects, I actually have rendering here, so it's not as boring. So we're asking to program about 175,000 to the annual playground replacement for, what you see here is Hillcrest Park playground replacement. Now with that project, we are looking at our existing funding in the CIP for that is about 88,000. We're looking to add about 175,000 to get us to the 263,000 needed to complete the project. This will be a very, a very good upgrade to one of our largest community parks. In addition to that, we're asking to program about 50,000 to well installation and upgrades on an annual basis. We like to, we've been trying to transition some of our parks from potable city water to well installations such that we're not, we're not taking water from citizens and we're, it helps with drought and drought resiliency in the future and also the ability to save cost. For public safety projects, you have an ongoing project here at Fire Station Two. We're looking at adding about 20,000 to that account to wrap that project up. We're also, we also have Fire Station Repair and Innovation, which is an, an annual CIP that we program just to keep the various fire stations maintained and, and it's in good condition. Then we have Fire Station Four Training Grounds. We've been slowly upgrading the training grounds at Fire Station Four, so 55,000 going to that one. And then lastly, 500,000 for the CAD system radio upgrades, which was previously approved this year. For streets and roads projects, I will get, I'll dive deep into the Walton Avenue Improvements projects in a later slide, but high level overview is Walton Avenue. We're looking at programming about 225,000 to get us to the final level to have that project ready to construct next year. Next, we have Bog Road Improvements. That's a large one related to the Newcombe Ranch Development. Through the development agreement with the developers, the city is going to be widening the south side of the road. That's going to be from, nearly from Railroad Avenue to State Route 99. So a pretty costly but beneficial project. Then we have Garden Highway Improvements. We're looking at programming about 648,000 there for design and construction, for a project that will be reconstructing Garden Highway from Lincoln Road to Bog Road, one of the worst pavement sections in the city. And then lastly, we have the Burden Market Safety Improvements. We're looking at programming 234, most of which is through the state ATP grant. So as I mentioned earlier, this is Walton Avenue Improvements Project. The scope of that is to reconstruct the roadway and rehabilitate the roadway from nearly Lassen Avenue to Hazel Avenue, which is almost down by Bog Road, installing, widening and installing bike lanes that are buffered and some sidewalk infrastructure for the students that attend AK and Lincoln Elementary School. Currently, we're working with our consultant to finalize design. We anticipate that we will be advertising for construction this fall with construction beginning anticipated early 2026. Next, we have the water projects for the wastewater, or first of all, we have 350,000 proposed to be programmed for the water treatment plant basin improvements. Then we have our annual water distribution system improvements and rehabilitations, a project dedicated to replacing various water lines and infrastructure throughout the city. Next is the ASR system, we're adding, or proposing to add 3.8 million to, and I will get into that in the next slide. And then lastly, we have the water treatment plant rehabilitation projects. We are looking to program about 1.2 and as Scarlett mentioned, the plant was built in 1969 and every year we, we, we bid a project or to, to keep the project, to keep the plant in operational, good operational condition. So this photo here is actually from the first phase of the Aquifer Storage Recovery Well, where they're, where they were actually drilling the well. The contract has been awarded and it's in progress, as you can see. And then phase two, we're looking at well equipping, design being finalized such that we can put a later phase project out to bid to actually have the storage and recharge well ready to go. For wastewater projects, we have the outfall diffuser project. We're looking to program 250,000. This is the other large, long-term project that Scarlett was talking about, that we don't quite have the grant funding finalized, but this is to help us acquire the permits necessary to lock down the grant or the, the loan. Then we have the secondary clarifier improvements, just rehabbing one of the clarifiers at the wastewater treatment plant and then various plant and collection projects at 1.5 million. So this is a picture of where the outfall diffuser is. We're looking to complete the permitting process right now. We're looking at finalizing the permit process such that we can be eligible for the 35 million in SRF loans that will be needed to complete this project. And with that, we're looking to construction in late 2026 and early 2027. And with that, that is what I have for CIP. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for the presentation. Quick question regarding specifically Walton and Garden. The numbers that were up on the board, they don't reflect the, I'm asking, they, they don't reflect the, the money that was, that was awarded through SECOG, correct?
No, no, that, that's our local contribution.
Right.
SECOG, there's a significantly, a significant more, significantly more dollars.
So when should we, we expect that funding?
We're programming to have the funding in place and we will get reimbursed as we're going through construction. So we should be seeing that probably mid to late 2026. We'll be invoicing SECOG as we're constructing the project.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
I really wanted to take a second to thank, again, before I forget, Josh and Scarlett for coming up here. This isn't their normal shtick, if they will, but I thought they did a great job and, and put a lot of information to you. And I, I think, you know, and in all my years, it, it's really hard even for me to grasp the concept of truly what public entities provide. And it's not just law enforcement or fire that we all see every day, but it's all the behind the scenes type of activities, services, et cetera. And if you look at simply at the dollar amounts that they're spending to keep water running, to keep, you know, allow toilets to be flushed, et cetera, that is a big operation and so much sits on their shoulders to make sure that happens every day. It's not easy to do. And for these folks putting it all together and summarizing it for you all here, very proud. But those are the behind the scenes services that really don't get talked about a lot, but they do a fantastic job here at Yuba City. So budget service impacts, we're going to bop back to the general fund, if you will, a little bit, but we're going to talk about some of the impacts. So one of them is the SAFER Grant through FIRE. I mean, Josh can certainly answer questions later, but that's only funded through May of this upcoming fiscal year. After that, we believe the SAFER Grant is going to a share of costs type venture and I believe it's a three-year, 25, 25, 65. If I remember that, wow, that still works. Thanks, Josh. So that's a share of costs that we have to come up with when, prior to that, we really didn't have much of a share of costs, I believe, if any, correct? Gap pool closure from September through January. I mean, those are some off months anyway, but there are some folks that utilize it for certain activities, but it is going to be closed. That was talked about back in February. Police officers, we have frozen positions there. We also have vacancies and as Chief Runyon can tell you, that it's not just three frozen police officer positions. You've always got folks out on injury, then you add to that three frozen positions, then you add to that vacant positions in the world that we live in today, very hard to recruit, et cetera. So it's a lot bigger than that. But they're doing a great job of balancing and making sure that the services get provided. Reduction in operating hours, you're familiar with that. Cancellation of concerts in the park, it's coming soon to a theater near you or a concert stage near you. Looks like we've got some sponsorship from Hard Rock, actually, and they're going to sponsor some of the concerts in the park for our residents coming up this year. No cost of living increases for employees since 23, 24. They've had, you know, merit increases, et cetera, but really no cost of living increases for employees. Other budget impacts, there is no general fund contributions to Capital Improvement Project Fund. We're cutting that off this year because, again, we don't have the revenue to do it. Reduction of some one-time funding sources, as we mentioned, and Deanna talked about how we're balancing to just get us started into this year of planning. Hard hiring freeze will begin September the first, we'll talk about that a little bit more later. We've reduced extra help employees, professional development for staff. Hate to see those things go. We're hoping we can put some of those back in once we start evaluating a little bit further. And then certainly reduce some city sponsorships as well with what we talked about with the ad hoc committee and in the workshop. Council acknowledgements. So this is an important piece, I believe is necessary when you're presenting any type of budget, if you will, but these are acknowledgements that I'd like the council to consider. And you can see, I'm not going to read every one of them to you, but the key ones, got to be that third bullet. The specific citywide priorities and associated action items should be developed as soon as possible. Definitely creating a plan moving forward, again, with specific action items, not general in a sense, but that's going to take all the city council members and it's going to take all of our staff to work together to make sure we have those priorities lined out and we understand how they can be accomplished and when they would be accomplished. Probably the, it's probably the biggest one for me on this page, but equally as important is overcome the structural deficit. You heard me say it already, I'm just going to say it again, is you didn't get here overnight. The deficit all of a sudden didn't magically appear and it's not going to magically disappear with one budget year. It just doesn't work that way. And if you want to give it a whirl, more power to you, but I'm telling you, not, certainly not my recommendation moving forward. It's going to be a multi-year effort, but we'll get there, but it takes proper planning, setting the proper cadence, and we'll get there. It's just, you can't cram it down the throat. So council acknowledgements as well, deficit reductions, some could be implemented, obviously some deficit reductions, but others are long-term approaches, which we've already started looking at. Recommended increases in expenditures, we'll have an expenditure reduction elsewhere. I did read that because I just want to remind your council, I, you're the bosses, you set policy, you approve the budget, we just make recommendations to you. But I would kindly ask that if you do make a recommendation to fund something else that's in the budget that's not in there, please direct me on where you want me to cut. It's your decision to make as far as increasing the budget or increasing a line item or department's budget, but I would also... budget, but I would also ask you, you tell me where to cut that money from or where to get it from. So 25, 26, we've talked about this already, it'll be a year of planning and working on some, through some difficult policy decisions, but your council has been very resolute so far. And not only for years, but I think at the beginning of the year, when you really had some tough decisions to make along with your department heads, you showed some great resolve. You did what needed to be done. There's still a lingering deficit there, but it could have been a lot worse. And so I appreciate the council's focus. But you're also saving for the long term, too, by investing in your pension trust, your OPEB trust, putting money into reserves. Well, we're not putting money into reserves this year necessarily. We still have that amount there, and we have other one-time funding that is there as well. So the objectives for 25, 26, again, I'm not going to read all of them to you, but that middle one is probably the biggest on your minds as council members, to provide that certainty for our workforce and residents. Listen, there's not enough money to go around, we all know that. And we're not just looking at cutting expenditures, but you need to look at revenue opportunities as well. And I know it's, it's not a popular thing to look at, but if you look within the region and actually statewide, and you look at revenues have materialized, whether through some creative thinking with jurisdictions or revenue measures, et cetera, those steps need to be looked at and taken, to be quite honest with you. The cost of doing business and running a city, when you are strictly service-based, for the most part, service-based, it's not cheap. And I know some folks say, well, you should be able to afford it with the resources you have. Yeah, not possible. I've been doing this job a really long time, not possible, unless you want to deliver a level of service that is just not acceptable to your residents. It's plain and simple. Again, been doing it way too long, and I know that's true. Other objectives, we'll evaluate options as we go along. Again, we've already started some of that work, and I think it's coming out very well. We already have a couple avenues that we're looking at to save costs, maybe increase revenues, et cetera. And you see the other ones there. Innovation is a big one. The more we innovate and more efficient we can be, the more effective we can be, and using the best possible ideas and approaches for how we spend taxpayer dollars is critical. If we don't have that as part of our component, which I can promise you this, all of your departmental leadership and your employees are looking at those things, then probably hang up the spurs, if you will, because that is an important part of the equation, is innovating with the times. Your staff is ready to do that, and they have been, actually. And it requires that innovation from council, too, again, to deliver the best service to our residents at the, you know, least cost possible, but making sure it's good quality. So our recommendations, again, fiscal year 25, 26, we're going to consider cost savings and avoidance measures. We'll evaluate all those large ticket items, hard hiring freeze. We talked about July at the workshop. After I've had a chance to evaluate, I'm thinking September 1st would be more appropriate for that hard hiring freeze. We have to put some mechanisms in place first, and we have to do some further evaluation. Again, this climate, this economic climate is not easy, and we're trying to balance what is the right thing to do. And I don't want to jump to anything by saying, hey, it's July, and then having chaos, you know, with certain positions that are needed within the city to provide quality services. So other recommendations, quarter one, quarter two, we're going to be doing a lot of work. We are, again, already started it, but we are diving headfirst, and we'll look at redesign options for the budget. Again, I'm just going to emphasize to the council, you all know this, but I'm just saying it, well, just to make myself feel better, I guess, but it's not just one solution, right? There's not one magical solution that's going to fix a deficit or fix ongoing costs of being more efficient, if you will, and effective. It's a combination of solutions. And so we're not just going to bring to you one or two recommendations, but over a period of the next year, we're going to be bringing several to you as we move through. That's what we get to, but Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for your time. Really want to thank Deanna and Josh and Scarlett for presenting tonight and for the department heads being here, and certainly open to answer any questions. Deanna would be more than happy to answer all of them for you.
Perfect. We'll just proper right up at the podium there. No, Mr. Bendorff, thank you for, for everything you've brought to the table in this, and before we open it up to questions or discussion from the council, to our entire team, our department heads, mid managers, everything. You know me, I'm pretty direct. There's been a hell of a lot of work that's gone into this. Go back, if you could, Mr. Bendorff, I think it's one or two slides. One more, two, right there, I think, was that it? Explore, the next, that's the one, the next to the last bullet. When we all went into this in, in January, we knew what we were looking down the barrel of, and never realized how true my words were going to be at that time when I said we're going to do the best job we can with everything we have, but what we've done for all these years isn't going to look the same. And then to look up there and see what you guys collectively as a team has brought forward, explore and evaluate service, redesign options, that's the leadership you guys have brought. And I want to say thank you before we even get into discussion, because you guys have a hell of a lot of work into this, so thank you. With that, I'll open it to the council with any comments or questions at this point before I go to the public. Anything you have up here?
Oh, wait till after the public comment.
Okay, okay. Then we will open it up to public comment at this time. If anyone has any public comment concerning the budget items that's been presented tonight, please step up to the podium, state your name and address, and give us your comments. Any public comment? Any public comment? Then I'm going to close it from the public comment, and I'm going to bring it back to the council. So I'll open it up to the council. Anybody have any questions or comments up here? Who I would like to go first?
I'll go short, short and sweet over here. Yeah, thank you guys so much for doing all the hard work. That is a lot. I think that there's a time to step in and a time to get out of the way, and I think that that's what I'm going to do for this round, because I do trust that you all kept the citizens and taxpayers, like Robert said, in mind when you did these budgets and created them with integrity and expertise, so much appreciated. And obviously, as we go forward, looking at, considering other cost-saving measures is going to be priority, and again, I do trust that that's what we're all going to do and that we're all in it together. So as I build relational capacity with the different departments and staff, I know that I will have questions, and maybe sometimes with a critical eye, but again, I, I really trust the staff of Yuba City, and thank you for doing all the work.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Having served on the ad hoc committee for budget, just wanted to say that we've been focusing a lot of attention on expenditures. You've done a tremendous job, all of you, of drilling down and squeezing every penny you can. Reality of any budget is that there are revenue and an expenditure side, and we need to focus on squeezing as many pennies as we can out of that revenue side as well. I think it's gone overlooked for the last three or four years, because you have been focused so much on the expenditure side, and so we've got to ramp it up, and that innovation that our city manager talked about is critical for the improvement of the community and your departments, and just being able to deliver the things that we do deliver. I know we got, David and I have been in a lot of meetings, because we are on that ad hoc budget committee, and the opportunity is here that we have to make an investment in our community, and just to overlook it and just say, oh, well, things will be okay is not okay. So we have to make those hard decisions, and I know that all of you are in it to be part of that, and I appreciate that from all of you. You've done a tremendous job. It's daunting at best, and I just wanted to recognize that for all of you, because you've, you sharpened your pencils as sharp as they can get. So with that, you'll...
Thank you. To my right.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to echo what council's already said about appreciating staff and department heads, the amount of time that you've put on this budget. It's certainly shown, and there are opportunities there, I agree. I would like to bring out, and I appreciate it was pointed out, that we have a wastewater facility and a, and a, and a water facility that are both older than some of the people in this room. And guess what? Things break down, and they need to be fixed, and that's how you maintain a quality of life, so thank you for, for the hard work that you do out there. The, Robert mentioned earlier that this is, this, the structural deficit is not unique to Yuba City. All you have to do is go online, and you'll see that the city of San Francisco is 800 million in the hole. Live Oak is 1.4, San Diego's 245, 246. Sacramento's 44, we're 6.2. It's, it's, a lot of communities are dealing with the same thing we are. Declining or stagnant revenue and expenditures that are going through the roof, whether they're insurance, chemicals, you name it. And so we'll, we'll get there, but it's going to be, it's going to be, it's going to take work. The, the community, our community, the households that see those costs that they've, that have gone up the last couple of years, cities and counties aren't immune to that. We have the same cost as well, and so that needs to be communicated as well. But I have absolute faith and respect in our team, so thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. First, to the staff, I know how much that you have put into trying to get a budget that allows you to provide a service at a level that you feel is, that you're able to provide. And I know in some cases, that level of service concerns you, because it isn't what you would want to provide or what you have provided in the past, and I know that, that you feel deeply about that, as do we up here. I think it's, it's, it's tough when you get into these budget cycles where, as Council, Councilman Pasquale said, where you're, you know, you're squeezing every penny out of every line. And I know that, having spent a fair amount of time making city budgets and now six years of, of trying to manage city budgets, it's, it's, you know, it's just this tough deal. The city of Yuba City, I think, has done a fairly good job. There's people that can always take exception to that, and I respect that, but at the same time, they're not sitting in there looking at the budget, and they're not dealing with the people that are developing the budget, and they're not, you know, they, they just haven't taken the opportunity to dive in deep. So when people say, hey, look, I want to take a look at the budget, Mr. Trainor, I appreciate that, because I think you will see things that we have done. You may agree with some, and you may disagree with some, but I guarantee you, the effort to make a budget that accurately represents the opportunities for the services that we provide with the money that we, that the public trusts us with. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things going on with this budget, and again, on the revenue side, I appreciate your comments, Mike. I think that, that I can, I can say, as one who's been here, sitting here for six years, is that you're absolutely correct. We have spent a lot of time on expenditures. It was necessary for us to do so, and necessary because we could see what was going to happen. We're not, we're not oblivious to the fact that prices are increasing, and we got a bit of a dose of that with COVID. And COVID, COVID kind of shook our world, obviously, and, and we hunkered down as a council at that time, pretty much suspended stuff. We, as a city, experienced this 2008, '09, et cetera, and, and had to do some, some budget maneuvers, and it looks like we're back at it again. And, and again, as I've mentioned, this isn't, this isn't something that just suddenly arose. This is something that, you know, we can see coming into, Councilman Kirchner's comments, every day I'm online, looking at, at what's going on up and down the state, and not because it's happening everywhere else does, makes it okay, but we're all dealing with that, even those who have passed recent revenue measures, because the pace of inflation and the cost of doing business just continues to escalate. And it's very, very challenging to sit back and watch that happen, knowing that you have a constituency that demands efficiency and effectiveness, demands that we, we spend the dollars correctly, and knowing that we are trying to do that, and our staff is desperately trying to do that. I don't know anyone that isn't trying to do what they feel is the right thing for the right reasons for the, for our, for our city. But there are elephants in the room. You know, we've got geopolitical issues now, you know, there's, the world is on fire. What's that going to bring? How do you do budgeting when you're not sure what the next move is going to be when you wake up into the next news cycle? We've lost a lot of department heads. We're going to, fortunately, we've done some succession planning, we've got some key individuals that I think are, are ready, ready to assume the, the new roles, but at the same time, that, you know, that brings challenge and challenge to the organization. And it, it's not necessarily just, you know, a normal routine thing to lose that many department heads, trust me. I've been here a long time, and we've not had to do that before. But I am confident that the organization will once again rally and support, especially in light of the fact that, you know, they're also, the staff is also, as is council, dealing with budget challenges. I think that one of the things that, that I look at is, you know, what are other places doing, especially in the region? And all of us sit on different committees, not only just locally, but at, you know, interact in the region, and everyone is taking a hard look at those things that are nice to do versus those things that we need to do. And I applaud the efforts of the Budget Ad Hoc Committee. I had a chance to go through the budget, as I typically have done, and yes, I went through line by line. You can ask Robert and Deanna, they, they responded to my emails and, and responded, sometimes with a sarcastic happy face, Robert, but that was okay. But Deanna was always pleasant. But, you know, that line-by-line scrutiny, I feel like I owe that not only to the constituency, but to all of us as well. And, you know, I, I looked at about 20 items that I thought, well, you know, I want to take a deeper dive into these, I think it's important for us to do that. And that's not to mean that any of the others didn't get scrutiny, it's just that I, I saw with the Budget Ad Hoc Diddy, committee did, not P. Diddy, no.
Here we go.
Good God, that was bad. But, you know, it was just, you know, my level of, of wanting to know. And out of that, I had an additional 10 that I looked at, and again, with Deanna and Robert's help, and I'm assuming with the help of staff, my questions were addressed to a satisfaction level that I have. But there, you know, and this is beating a dead horse a little bit, but there are some things in here still that I think we need to consider. And this is, this is, you know, a tough one for me, and it's, it's, it's under the, the memberships that we take as far as the city. And when we pay for these memberships, and, and some people are going to say, hey, man, that's not really that much money in the scheme of things, but cumulatively, it makes a difference. You know, when we're out having to, to literally beg businesses to, to sponsor concerts in the park, when we have the ability within our own budget to, to take a hard look at return on investments with memberships to organizations that we pay, you know, $28,000 worth or $22,000 worth, I think it's important for us to take a hard look at that, you know? And what I'm going to, to mention here is, is it's $52,000, and how much is the total budget? I know, you know, it seems like nothing, but at the same time, in these times, it's something. It is to me, anyway, as a citizen of the city, city of Yuba City, and as a council person. And, and I know that some of these, some of these things are beneficial, so I'm going to mention, too, the League of California Cities. And as I talk with my peer council people in the North State, there's a lot of folks unhappy with the League of California Cities. And we're paying them $24,000 a year, and I'm not seeing a return on investment. I just don't see it. You know, that, yes, they have conferences, and yes, there's information there, but we can go attend those. Yeah, we'll pay a little bit more for that attendance, but do we really need to pay them? Yeah, we'll pay a little bit more for that attendance, but do we really need to pay them 24,000 bucks a year? I don't believe it. The Greater Sacramento Economic Council, 28,000 bucks. I've talked to, again, talked to my peers. There's a lot of folks really disenchanted with these folks right now. They're not returning anything unless you live in the, in the Greater Sacramento area. Nothing's come back to Yuba City in the six years I've been on the council and wherever else. That's $52,000. Some are going to look at me and go, wow, that's not much. But it is to me. And, you know, whether we, we take, take care of it here or we take care of it at the time of, we have the discussion at least with my peers at the time of when you sign up again, which is July. Thank you, Deanna, for the information. I think we deserve to take a look at this stuff. What are we getting for that kind of money? Other than that, I mean, I think you guys have done a fabulous job. That's my, I mean, as I look at that, those are my two issues is, is these memberships that we're paying. And I think that, you know, again, not to beat a dumb, a dumb horse, not a dumb horse, but not to beat a dead horse, yeah. You know, we're going to be nimble. We're going to continue, as Robert mentioned, to, to take a look. This is certainly, budgets are always dynamic, but this one's going to be super dynamic. And it's not a one-year, one-off deal. We're going to be looking at this for several years. And, you know, what I, what I ask is, of my colleagues is, I will vote for this budget if you will, if you, and I'm certainly, you don't have to do a darn thing for me. I would ask that you respectfully consider that when GSEC and the League of Cities comes up for renewal, that we have the discussion at least, then I can vote for the budget. If we're just going to grant that to them, I'm a no. But other than that, that's nothing to say that you guys haven't done a fabulous job on the rest of the budget. I, I really do think that you have, and I support, I support the changes. And Robert, thank, thank you for being here during this time. You're bringing a fresh set of eyes from a different lens that I think is very helpful. Enough said.
All right. Well, I'll close out the remarks then. Been up here six years. This has been the, pardon the French, the damnedest budget that I've seen in six years because it's been tough. And I go back to where I started. Thank you, guys. Six years ago, when Mark and I started out on this council, let's call it a mess. Things were kind of here, things were kind of there, and we had some things we had to do to get the house in order, and it wasn't from any of you sitting over there. So, please do not take any offense to that. It had nothing to do with you guys. It had to do with what was coming from prior leadership. We spent the six years, we've gone through the expenses, the expenses, there ain't nothing left. If we start doing that, we start really having a devastating impact to the services that we provide to our city. When you get into miscellaneous things, quite honestly, anything that we spend money on, I'm going to have five people over here that say, great. I'm going to have five people over here to say, not so great. But we have to take a step back, and we have to lead as a council. And that leadership is what I said at the budget workshop. This budget has got to be a year that's built on collaboration and trust. And I'm talking to you guys right there because this is where it's got to work, where sometimes we may not see the benefit of something. You or your team or your staff may see the benefit in something, and we may never see it, and we don't need to take those things away. We need to step back, and there was a time that our tentacles needed to go all the way down six years ago to, you know, we're spending 2,000 here, we're spending 10,000 there, we're, the biggest thing I remember, Mark, was where the hell's the training budget? It was all under the city manager. So, you know, we restored that and got everybody's, you know, training budgets back to where they could actually manage them. We've done a lot of good. Coming into this seat, never thought I'd be sitting up here going through a world pandemic for years that we just went through of economic hell, and now we're turning around and trying to come out of it, but now you've got everything else going on. We have to deal with the state, and just call it what it is. We know how the budget's working there, there are how many billions of dollars upside down, and they want to cut things. We have to figure it out ourselves, and it's going to take you guys, and it's going to take us. And the one thing I like, Mr. Bindorf, about this approach is, you know, the timing was right for you to come join us because it was just dead on. It was time for us to get out of the tentacles and get back at that high level. Doesn't mean we can't get back down there. But you know what? We don't know what you guys do every day, and you guys have done an awesome job in putting this together, and you've, you've already done what we asked the impossible, and you guys stepped up, and I'm very proud of this team, how you guys have stepped up. But I think we need to get back to the level of passing this budget and, and then monitoring it because that's what, that's what businesses that are successful do. When things get tough, then you gather around every quarter, because monthly, we talked about it last time, monthly is almost too fast because you don't have enough data, and an accounting cycle is three months. So, we're going to come together every quarter. This budget is a budget, it's really, as we call it, a spending plan, and we'll take a look at it. And you know what? If we're off by $1,000 for the quarter, I'm not so much worried. We're off by a couple of million, now we're going to be back down into the weeds again a little bit, you know? And then, Robert and I, are we having a talk, right? Just seeing if he's listening. But I really think this is the time that we, as a council, need to show our leadership ability and take that, that step back and go, you know what? We're going to adopt this budget, and we're going to work collaboratively with our team, make sure that we're developing the leaders within, we're taking care of our team, because we will come out of the back of this. Everything's still on the table. Our budget's a tool, and if we need to adjust in September, Mr. Bindorf, we will adjust in September. I'm, I'm, I'm sure we will. If we need to adjust in December, we will adjust in December. But the one thing I'm super proud of this council is we did take a different approach than where prior councils have, other cities have, because they just come in and start cutting and slashing and thinking this is going to fix everything, and they don't realize the damage that they caused their city and the damage that they caused to the families that are part of our team. That's kind of been one of our guiding principles, hasn't it, Mike? Is get our team through this. And so, with that, you know, Vice Mayor, we can have those discussions when the time comes, but I really think we need to get back and show support for our, our leadership and, and there, and doesn't mean we're out of the way, but I think we need to do that. And I will conclude my comments there and open it back up to any actions or anything by the council.
To the mayor.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the proposed fiscal year 2025, 2026 operating budget. In addition to that, adopt a resolution approving the fiscal year 2025, 2026 capital improvement program. Also, to adopt a resolution approving the city's appropriations limit for fiscal year 2025 through 2026.
Okay. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and have a second. Not required, but Mr. Bindorf?
Before you took a vote, I just, I wanted to thank your council for your understanding. I mean, it's not an easy year, and when you said you didn't expect a few things, I bet you never expected a guy from the other side of the river, the wrong side of the river, be over here in front of you. But I appreciate the opportunity, not just to work on a budget, but to work on your world-class staff. I mean, they, they are great to work with every day, and like I tell you, I, I know who my bosses are. I certainly work for you, but I really work for them and to get them the tools and resources they need to do their job. Every, every action has a reaction, but this action that's occurred with the economy the way it is, our budget the way it is, the reaction from all of you and your staff is so professional and above-board and focused. And so, we'll get through it. It's going to take a little time, but we'll get through it. So, I just really wanted to say thank you, not only from me, but on behalf of all the staff that have worked really hard putting this together. That's it.
What I was going to say is it's not required, but Christie, I'd like to ask for roll call vote on this one. Aye.
Vice Mayor Boomgarden?
No, with the proviso that I mentioned, I support you, staff. I don't want anyone to lead you to believe differently.
Councilmember Cole?
Aye.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Aye.
Councilmember Pasquale?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. We have 4-1, and so, we do have our budget. Thank you, Mr. Bindorf. Thank you to the entire city team. We'll work through this together. Okay? So, let's go on to Agenda Item 16, and is there any future agenda items that the council wants to come forward?
Sorry to spring this on you, Mr. Mayor. We have this, I know I've talked to staff about this before. We really have this ongoing issue. It happens to be in my district. It's Cherry and Walton, and it seems like there's, there's accidents out there almost, it feels like it's once a week. If we could maybe take a look at that and have staff come back with some type of plan moving forward, so at least I know, and I think my constituents would appreciate that because it's, it's, if you don't live out there, you probably don't see it. If you're first responders, you absolutely do see it, but I'd, I'd like some kind, something brought before council, a plan or something.
Is that doable, Mr. Bindorf?
You know, I'll get with Councilmember Kirchner, and walking back over here, I want to make sure to catch all of it. Okay. Councilmember, I'll get with you. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Hearing none, then we will move on to reports communication, starting with Mr. Bindorf. City manager's report.
I talked myself out, Mayor. I'm good.
Perfect. All right. Well, I'm back to my usual. Would you like to go first tonight again, Ms. Cole?
Sure. I actually have nothing to report unless we're at leisure to speak on the planning commission appointments. Okay, then no. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Mr. Kirchner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start with the fun world of mosquitoes. We created an ad hoc to meet with employee reps to discuss the salaries this year. We approved, the board approved a 2.3% increase, the COLA increase for the salaries, also preliminary, approval of the 2025, 2026 budget. Gilizer, we had an election of chair, and I pulled a short straw. In addition to that, we had a public hearing to consider, and we did approve the 25, 26 budget. We also got updated by a lot of projects moving forward that have to do with aging infrastructure, which was mentioned this evening. Lastly, I would just like to mention that there were some amazing, amazing candidates for our planning commission moving forward, and I conclude my report.
Right. Councilmember Pasquale?
Nothing to report, Mayor.
All right. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Attended a SACOG transportation meeting. Really nothing significant to report back there, more budget stuff. Also, a SACOG regular board meeting where they took us on a tour of the Arden Arcade area, and I can, I can certainly report back to the council and anyone else who's listening is if you think our roads are bad, take a ride, ride through Citrus Heights and that area. It's just as bad. But they have a plan, and they're executing on it. Of course, it's about the ability to pay, just like everything else. And I would say that, thank you to Councilman Kirchner for helping sit in with me on planning commission interviews. The talented individuals that, that we interviewed made the decision or the recommendation that you will see, you know, very challenging, very good people, which was encouraging to hear that we have folks that are willing to step up and, and help, help the city move along from the planning commission. So, with that, that's the end of my comments.
All right. In light of the heaviness of the tonight's meeting with the budget, first of all, thanks for staying. Okay? I think you guys might have been interested, though, so trying to lighten it a little bit. We've done a lot of things. It has just been, I think, all-city work, and to try to capsulate it, I would not even begin to do it justice. Mr. Bindorf, thank you for your work that you've put into everything, and it's been a pleasure so far working with you, sir. And to our city team, again, thank you, guys. RWMA, we continue the meeting. We'll be finishing up the budget on the 24th. Did a few ribbon cuttings, American Legion at the Sutter Cemetery. We're all been selecting our planning commission. I nominated the council member for Gilizer. Congratulations. And we've had all these meetings going on. So, with that, I'm sure there'll be more to report next time. Looking forward to things ahead as we've got exciting times ahead of us. So, with that, if hearing nothing else to come before us, we will stand adjourned.